Call the meeting in order. Dr. Digum, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sham.
Here.
Dr. Bridges.
Here.
Mr. Jester.
Here.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Here.
Ms. John.
Here.
Colonel Waters.
Here.
This time we have some special recognitions to give out for this evening.
Yes, this evening. I'll go ahead and come over here. Colonel Waters, where are you going from here?
I am going to the Washington DC area.
Okay, well, when you get to the Washington DC area, I want you to know, there won't be very many people to have you. At some point, I expect to come visit wherever you are and expect to see everybody here. We expect to see it as well. Because this is a, come on up here, I'd like to offer this to you on behalf of the Board of Education. This is an old day, a handful of people get this, people that serve on our board and people that, we recognize the volunteers here. But attending, serving our board for three years, here's the man who wanted to offer this to you. And also, I think you're a good student, you're a good person, but on behalf of the board here, Ben Hart sometimes understands you. He's not so bad, but I think he's excellent, but I just want to say it's an honor working with you and on behalf of the Board of Education.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, so let's get poked fun of about how fast I talk from the Northeast. So after three years here, I'll poke fun back and say, you all hear faster, I haven't slowed down at all, okay? So I'm really humbled to get this, thank you very much. It's been, it's been a great assignment here, and I think the best thing about it is the people, and all of you have proven it over and over again. So for the, for the board here, thank you very much for being part of this. I know I'm not a voting member, but I appreciate your time before and after the meetings to talk about issues, to make our community a better community now for our children. So thank you very much, I really do appreciate it. I'll send you a picture back when I'm in DC, okay? So Lynn pokes fun at me too, she sees me with a big smile the last couple of days, because Colonel Curtis is my replacement, lucky this time, he's been here a few weeks, he'll be here a few weeks before we change out. So Sam, I'll turn over to you if you want to talk about yourself a little bit, where you've been, what you're doing?
No, I just want to say, or I appreciate the welcome from everyone. My family and I were coming from Pennsylvania, from the War College, and look forward to being here in Fort Sill and, and working in the Washington-Fort Sill community.
at Fort Sill at 8:00. The initial invitation went out at 9:00, but we changed it because of the heat, we decided to go a little bit early in the morning. It'll be on, on Fort Sill, at the old Post Water Angle, you're all welcome to come. Hopefully we see you there. Thank you very much.
Evening, Frank.
Evening, Frank. Originally it was 9:00, we moved it earlier because of the heat, you get people out of the heat, and the soldiers got a heat too. All right. Thank you both, welcome, Colonel Curtis.
Thank you.
Architects' report?
No architect's report today.
Departmental report?
Yes, the department report. I've asked Mr. Smith, and I've talked, and he'd like the opportunity just to give a quick update on the last one. There were some deadlines and things, and this is going to be a kind of a brief update on the previous presentation. We want to, and then we'll move into the next one on the next board meeting.
Yes, we had some questions last board meeting about the school performance review, and he kind of put it in a different format for you to look at on what timetables are. You know, a lot of the things that don't have timetables are dependent upon bond issues, that type of thing. We do have some dates for, like, number four, we think that can be done by the end of the first semester. Same thing with number eight, and the rest of those, if they don't have a date by them, they're already in the process of being done at that. So if you look over that, that kind of clarified some of the questions we had last board meeting. Any questions about that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On item B, on the journeyman and contract pay proposal, Mr. Ledford has requested that we give, give a little time, if we could hold off on this presentation. So he and I and, and Mr. Smith can work with his department and Human Services, come up with a, compile all the data necessary for our next board, yes. So we'd like to just hold off on item B under my report.
Now to report the superintendent.
I'm going to report superintendent, I have item A, consideration and action regarding approval of new open transfers for 2016, 2017, names of students, of course, are under separate cover.
Do we need a motion to table that?
Item?
I don't know if it's a, I don't know, it's a non-action item.
Okay.
No.
That's what I thought it was. Actually, it's on him.
It's, yeah, it will, it will come up, okay, then we can do that then.
Thank you.
Any good question? I keep moving too fast. Item seven, item A, consideration and action regarding approval of new open transfers for 2016, 2017, and, have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.
Yes.
Senator, item B, we have consideration and action regarding the proposed 2017-18 LPS school calendar. This is for not this year, but for next year, the upcoming school year, 12, 15 months from now.
If you'll excuse me, and just so we can over-communicate again, because this is the main thing that I always get, you know, and I think we did a really good job, if people would hear the message of why we are going so early into next year, and I think that was good for us to hear that again, because people say, why are we starting school so early in August, you know, it's so hot, and I thought we were supposed to be later, there's some school districts in other states that start after Labor Day, so if you could just, kind of just tell us that again, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely, and if we have to readopt this calendar, we'll do it then, too.
We've done that before.
But in a nutshell, the decision comes down from, all of our state testing is crunched into a date which is defined by the state. We, as a district, have very few activities after our testing date, so the, the decision is really an instructional decision to make sure we get as many instructional days into our schedule for our students and staff. So it's purely an instructional decision, even, you know, with, with these changes, you know, we can add actually five to seven instructional days before our students are assessed by the state, and so, pure and simple, it's an instructional decision and...
And do you think that going forward, this can be, if it's successful, that we'll kind of stick to that then, so they won't have that wavering, you know, that two weeks in August has always floated around as a parent, I know of, you know, guessing when school is going to start, so...
I, I hope so, because if, if, back in January, I believe, we changed the calendar policy, which used to prescribe when we started and when we ended. We removed the end date, and that gives us the ability to start a little differently. And so I do, this will be, this will, this cup coming here will be our first year under the new, and then this one will be the second, so I'm looking forward to it.
Any other questions, comments?
Good question.
Make a question to approve, but...
New calendar.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.
Yes. Under items, I'm going to go and address items D and E, I would request to table them. Mr. Owens has contacted me, and the high school and middle school principals have asked, we think we can address this internally rather than changing the attendance hours. This is, our REO, our Regional Accreditation Officer notified this in mid-July that, and the difference is, functionally, we wouldn't have to do anything, but we would have our high schools actually having two fewer attendance days, and if we had into a snow day situation, that would be problematic for the district. So Mr. Owens has asked that we give them a little time, I think they can address it internally, so if we can, I'd like to table items D and E until next, I'm board meeting. Hopefully not disrupt the schedule.
Skip C.
We skipped one.
Oh, I skipped one, yes, I apologize. I was looking at my circles.
C.
Oh, sick leave.
I didn't see.
Sick leave.
Consideration and action regarding proposed revisions to policy DEC, sick leave. This is simply an update based on the contingent leave policy we adopted last board meeting.
I'm going to approve it.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.
Yes. This is, I think, was where you pulled this one, is that?
Yes, item, item B.
No, item A.
And why did they want us to table, what was it again?
Item D, this is, item D is a request to change the, to add five minutes a day, but we think we can adjust the calendar within the day without changing the, the schedule.
Oh, okay.
And so I think the principals will have a solution for us pretty quick.
So do we need to make a motion to table it?
No.
Just, we just asked, it's an action.
He's just pulling it.
Okay.
And then the same for item E, they were, they were sister policies.
And F is what you need more time with, too, right? This is Kent Ledford's salary schedule.
And then item F, Mr. Ledford and I and Mr. Smith met today, and we'd like to hold off on this and come with more data, and we understand, I think, what the data is necessary to present.
And you all made the decision to table it.
Yes. And item G is my information, superintendent announcements, I have two or three. First of all, if you'll, we noticed, we have Melinda Russ, this is her last day as our reporter for the school district, she will actually be going to MacArthur High School and teaching speech.
This is two reporters now that we have stolen, so if we keep this up, this is...
Three.
Yeah, that's good, I like that.
It is a sore spot with David Hale, we keep stealing his teachers. So thank you, Melinda, for your service, and thank David Hale for his sacrifice. We have our new reporter, KW, and KW, last name again.
Hillis.
Hillis, KW Hillis, she's already done a little bit of work with us, so I'd like to introduce KW. We have two or three announcements, one, Career Pathways Initiative was kicked off last month, it was a statewide event, we had Superintendent Joy Hoffmeister here, and basically, Career Pathways is, is just an initiative started by, largely under Mr. Mattingly, spearheaded him, the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Corporation, and it is simply an effort to make sure that our schools are preparing career readiness for our students as they graduate. And so it's, in addition, something that grew directly out of that effort was a House bill promoted by Representative John Montgomery, which actually allowed for apprenticeships, internships, and mentorships. We'll have this year to figure out how we're going to implement that, and we'll be able to have a policy sometime this year to the board on how we're going to implement that in our district. So that originated with our district, I'm very proud of this effort, and our Economic Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, everybody involved, it's just a very, very good thing. Our wild test scores released at the end of May show LPS is heading in the right direction. Eleven out of 16 elementary schools, third grade improved their reading scores, fourth grade, fifth grade scores in reading, math, and science all also improved. I've got a letter here, June 26th, and we're hoping, now, June 28th, Lawton is going to host the Engage Oklahoma Conference, that's where...
July.
July 28th, sorry, thank you. July 28th, a little over a month from now, Lawton's going to host the Engage Oklahoma Conference, it used to be a statewide conference for all educators that we would go to Oklahoma City. This year, they're doing it regionally, we're hosting this region, we already have over 500, we've already, over 400, we've had to expand to 500. So we'll have 500 educators from southwest Oklahoma at Lawton High, we'll have Joy Hoffmeister there, and I'm hoping they can get to move this, because our, we received, it's the Oklahoma State Department Achievement for Excellence in Annual Financial Reporting. In other words, Lawton Public Schools, I think we've gotten this twice before, Ms. Brainstetter, twice, it's a big deal. It means we top the list in school districts our size, they break it up into school district size, so for a school district our size, we're at the top of the list in our, getting our reports in on time, accuracy, all those other things, and that is, that is because of people in special ed, finance, HR, payroll, federal programs, I'm just tremendously proud of our staff, but we'll be getting that award hopefully on the 26th, hopefully it can get removed to the 28th, so we can do it right here in Lawton. So I want to congratulate my staff, amazing, amazing. And then last but not least, I want to let everybody on the board know, I don't know if I informed the board, but during the recent floodings, I got a letter of thanks from Chief, Fire Chief Duane Furk, he wanted to thank the board, we actually had three buses go out that day to help, fortunately, they didn't need us, but during the flooding, and he sent a letter of recognition, but of congratulation, thanks, but one of the most important things is not only that, they kind of waived an expense we had because of something last year, so not only are they thanking us, but they actually waived a call based on something we had happen last year, we hit an awning with one of our buses, and the fire department has waived that expense, so I think that's a good sign of cooperation between our two, two agencies, so I appreciate that.
They didn't need any of our buses, we didn't have them.
We didn't need, we were there, didn't ultimately need them, so sent us home, and so I'm, you know, just glad that we could help. All right, but that's all that happened in my report, any questions?
Where is his? Is it in the consent?
It's in the consent agenda.
Does anything, anybody need anything removed from the consent agenda?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
One, I want to make note of the addendum, that has, the addendum, it's a contract for testing for Alpha Plus. Number two, I'd like to note that we've received a revised budget from Ms. Brainstetter, it's also in front of you, on pages 162 through 163. Item three, Mr. Sham has requested that we separate page 235, and that's the contract with Oklahoma Sports Network, he also serves on that, is involved in that organization, and I...
Voted separately, yeah.
Yeah, wants to vote it separately. And finally, number four, we'd like to table, or not table, yes, we'd like to table, pull separately, item 8E3, which is the athletic allocations, is that correct, Ms.?
Yes.
Yes, so I hope you got all that, and anything else from the board, we'd like to pull for separate consideration. It's a big agenda, so this is not really abnormal to pull some things.
Okay, so entertain a motion of the rest of the consent agenda.
I move to approve, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those things removed.
One second. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.
Yes. Now we need to vote separately on the page 235 for the Oklahoma Sports Network contract. Entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Mr. Jester. Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.
Abstain. Okay, that's all the consent agenda, huh? Guess we have a proposed executive session? Yes, we do. Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. John.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Dr. Bridges.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Mr. Sham.